Seven to two. Welcome to Madison District Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. Tonight is approval for 2022. First, we're going to do a round of allegiance. Trust me, I please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a free and equal body for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, public fundamental. It's not fundamental. Public information and public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District.
Madam President, roll call.
Oh, thank you. Roll call, please.
Crystal Weaver.
Here.
Rebecca Shandless.
Here.
Mark Holcomb.
Here.
Cindy Holder.
Here.
Barbara Castle.
Here.
Deborah Ott.
Here.
Gloria Thompson.
Here.
Leah Korn.
On again. For our public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting. A period of time known as public comment is set aside at each meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the board about school-related topics. Anyone who wishes to speak to the board must fill out a request form and give it to the board secretary before the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. Board of Education accepts comments made during public comment for anyone who follows these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many information sources the Board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The Board also works with the district staff to address citizens' concerns and questions. Do we receive any requests?
Madam President, I do not.
Okay, onward then. We have student of the month for three buildings and Mr. Cheese. I can't read today, I apologize. Superintendent Report, you're up, Mr. Doolittle.
Madam President, so based on the feedback that we received last month on the popularity of highlighting student performance and feedback, we established student of the month. So what I'm going to do is move the mic over. We're going to start with the early childhood center. The principal will be here along with the teacher. We'll ask the student to come up. Where the teacher or the principal will say something, a small narrative about the student. They'll take some pictures. And then we'll have a five-minute recess after. Should parents want a family picture with the staff and administration and the teachers. So we'll start with the early childhood center and I'll meet you down here with the mic.
All right, I'm going to let Ms. Hoot up here and talk about our two students of the month in ECC.
Hello, thank you for having us here. I'm really excited to talk to you about these two wonderful students. I'm going to start with this young lady right here. Her name is Zamaris Harris. Zamaris, it's an absolute pleasure to have in class. Every morning she greets me with a smile and a hug. She's sweet, she's kind, and she's very helpful. She is friendly and inclusive to everyone. I've never had to ask her to quiet down on the carpet. And she's a great example to her classmates and to myself as well. It's been an honor to teach you, Zamaris.
This is for you.
And this gentleman is Mr. Elijah Hobbs. Elijah is absolutely wonderful. He is hardworking, he always stays on task in school. He is always willing to lend a hand to his fellow classmates and to his teacher. He's a wonderful, kind boy and a fantastic role model to his peers as well.
Thank you, Elijah.
Congratulations, you two.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Provenzola-West, the principal of Madison Elementary School. And this evening we have two of our third grade staff members presenting students of the month, starting with Ms. Lindsay Turnwald.
Hello, my name is Ms. Turnwald and I have chosen Brielle Young as our student of the month. I've had the pleasure of being Brielle's second and third grade teacher and it has been such a treat. I get to see her sweet, smiling face each and every day. I feel that Brielle embodies the excellence we aim to achieve at MES inside and outside of our classroom. Inside the classroom, Brielle is our rock. She is someone we can turn to for anything. She is the first one in right away in the morning, getting to work, and sets such a great example for her classmates. She is the first one to follow directions and will often repeat them for me when I ask her to. She can understand what I'm getting at when I tend to ramble and she is the first person I can think of to run errands for me because of her trustworthiness. And she's someone who can be a friend to anybody that we need. Outside of the classroom, Brielle is so much fun. She is one of the fastest, if not the fastest, kid in the third grade and is always up for racing or slowing down for her classmates to not hurt their feelings while they're playing, which is a true story. She cares deeply for her friends and is a great example of how a friend should be. Everyone should have a friend like Brielle. Brielle was the first student I had in mind when thinking about this award. I can't think of a more deserving student than her. She is a wonderful girl and the best student. I couldn't be more proud to be her teacher.
That's my granddaughter.
She made it. Ms. Turnwald told me this morning that she was worried she might tear up a little bit because she just is so in love with Brielle and she's so happy to have her. But she made it, she made it. So next we have Ms. Patton and her student Josiah Ken.
I am so happy to announce that Josiah Ken is one of our third grade students of the month. I've been Josiah's teacher for two years and I am just so proud of all the progress that he's made. Oh my goodness, I might tear up. Josiah is helpful, caring, a big goofball who loves to have fun, and kind, tall. He is a hard worker and doesn't give up even when things get tough. Josiah, all of your teachers are so incredibly proud of you. Your willingness to take on new learning, to get the work done, and follow directions is tremendous. I cannot wait to see what Josiah will accomplish in the future. He's just getting started.
While the middle school is coming up, I would just like to say that our third grade teachers, they are, they just love their kids and they were with them since last year because we did loop up from second grade to third grade. So everything is very, very heartfelt and they are just wonderful. We'll start with Keishon here. Every day, Keishon Jones walks into class ready to work. Very polite, kind, tall classmates. So very quiet, determinationful, settles for nothing but his very best. For example, if he gets a B+ on an assignment but he knows he can do better, asks if he could try again to learn to earn an A every time. He's always paying careful attention, taking notes, asking questions, doing his best work, enjoys working in groups with his friends. And we admire how he's able to work with his peers and help them figure out a problem. He is a joy to have in class and we're very proud to nominate Keishon Jones as one of our sixth grade students of the month. We also tonight have Dolly Sabry. Every day, Dolly walks into class with a smile on her face. She asks if she can erase the board, chats with her friends until the bell rings. She just brings happiness and positivity to class every day. She can be soft-spoken but doesn't hesitate to raise her hand to answer a question and she's always eager to try out our daily math puzzle. Dolly is a hard-working math student. If she doesn't get something at first, she's always asking for clarification and we rarely have to remind her to stay on task or get her work done. She's a self-motivator. When working with others, Dolly tends to be the student that's making sure everyone understands the answer before moving on. She's a wonderful, wonderful student. We are so proud of her. For these reasons and many others, your teachers have nominated you as student of the month. Congratulations.
Good evening. So for the high school.
Can you hear me?
So for the high school, our student of the month is Antonio Lewis Jr., who's a senior. So let me tell you guys a little bit about Antonio. Antonio is a very bright student whose hard work has paid off as he is planning to go to college in the fall. Throughout his high school career, Antonio has been enrolled in honors classes and events placement classes. He is a student who is well-liked by his peers and teachers. Antonio has a 3.5 GPA, which has earned him the ability to qualify for a prestigious scholarship from the University of Detroit Mercy. So last month, Antonio participated in a one-on-one interview for this scholarship, which includes a full ride. And just today, we found out he earned a full ride for four years. In addition to his scholarship, it also includes three paid co-op summer internships with corporations including Ford, Longbridge, and Rush. So Antonio, you have really made us proud academically and it is such an honor to have you at the high school. And congratulations for being student of the month.
With that, we're going to take five. So anybody that needs pictures or would like pictures to do that. If anybody needs to head home, feel free. And then we will continue. Next up is approval of minutes for March 7th, 2022 regular board meeting and March 17th, 2022 special board meeting slash workshop. Any need of maker and support, please?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Castle.
I'll second.
Trustee Ott. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Trustee Thompson.
I'm trying to find them. Do we have all the discussion and all the wording on these minutes?
No. Because. I think we're going to be better up there from here on out.
Okay.
Yes? Is that agreement, power of one? Oh. Okay, anything else? Hearing nothing, roll call vote, please.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Barbara Castle.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Rebecca Shandless. Yes. Crystal Weaver.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now I need approval to move the resolution to appoint owner's representative, Plan Moran Crassa, to the A1 position. I need support to move it. Maker and support, please.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Kristi. I'll send her. Sorry, thank you Weaver and Castle. And any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Shandless? Yes. Mark Holcomb.
Yes. So the resolution is to authorize Mr. Doolahad to enter in. How are you changing it? It's not, it's the resolution to appoint owner's rep. It was a resolution.
But this is just to move it.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is just to move it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay. Mark Holcomb?
Yeah.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Barbara Castle?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Madam President, I was turning coming to school tonight. I have something I'd like to say that has to just do with the presentation that you just had as well as the one from last meeting. I may be allowed at some point in time during the meeting.
Does anyone else still do that right now? Okay, go ahead, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm Tom Smith, as you know, this is my opinion. The older I get, the seem to harder it is to impress me. Not that I don't appreciate all the effort and accomplishments that good people achieve every day, but at the March 7th, 2022 school board meeting, I got to see some really impressive kids be honored for their winning quotes in the motivational saying competition. These young people made comments about respecting themselves and others in university and approaching life with a positive attitude. Their sayings, their sayings are things that many adults can benefit from. I'm proud of all of them. They're already bagged with members of the community, I believe, but we're growing valuable adults. And the same holds true for the folks that were students of the month again tonight. It's just makes us such a pleasure to come to these meetings and appreciate what some hard work that these young people and their adults who are pumped to guide them accomplish. It's just wonderful thing to see and be able to talk about. I want to say that I love and appreciate the kids. I know that many other people contribute to making these young people be what they are and what they will become. Presidents and other family, parents and other family members who invest their time, effort, and love in these kids, give them the opportunity to become happy, young persons who grow into productive adults. Principals, teachers, counselors, and staff all make contributions to these children's success. The Madison Heights administration and school board trustees who support the district's mission to educate these kids play another fundamental role. You should all be proud of your contributions to this district's students. The district has faced some challenges in recent years, but I see a dedicated group of committed individuals who keep rising to the task. And the proof of it is that all the young people will continue coming out, coming out of school, so they're prepared for the next stage in life. I see a district that's rising, that's rising, making a better physical environment for learning, bringing in teachers who clearly give in to the kids and working to give them the tools for success. I think parents could serve their children very well by sending their kids to Madison District Public Schools. I ask for your attention, that's all I have for now.
So we are ready to go to the resolution to appoint owner's representative. Correct. All righty. With that, it says, whereas on November 2nd, 2021, qualified electors of the schools that voted in favor of bonding for a not-to-exceed amount of $11,400,000, the proceeds to be used for the purpose of replacing roofs at the high school, the middle school, and the early childhood center, and remodeling and re-equipping the high school in part for classroom, security, mechanical, electrical, and other infrastructure improvements collectively the bond issue. Whereas, after a thorough analysis, the school district is desirous of hiring and appointing Plan Moran Crassa to act as the school district's owner representation representative for the bond issue. And whereas, the school district is desirous of authorizing the superintendent of the school district, Angelo Doolahad, or as does need, to negotiate the terms and conditions of contract with Plan Moran Crassa on terms substantially similar to the terms and conditions contained in the draft contract. Which contract is a contained in the draft contract, which contract is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference and subject to the review and approval of the school district's legal counsel. Now, therefore, it resolved that the school district hereby appoints Plant Moran Crassa to act as the school district's bone representative for the bond issue. The superintendent of the school district, Angelo Abdullah Had, or his designee, is hereby authorized to negotiate a contract with Plant Moran Crassa on terms substantially similar to the terms and conditions contained in the draft contract, which is, which contract is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference and subject to the review and approval of the school district's legal counsel. The superintendent of the school district, or his legal designee, is hereby authorized to execute the resulting contract with Plant Moran Crassa, as well as any and all documents necessary and incidental to said contract on behalf of the school district. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the resolution to authorize Mr. Abdullah Had to enter into contract with Plant Moran Crassa. So I need a maker in support.
Madam President.
Trustee Thompson. Support. Trustee Ott. Do you have anything you'd like to say to us?
Uh, we need to get my name, trustee, thank you, thank you. Again, my name is Paul Wills, with Plant Moran Crassa, I'm a partner with these, the K-12 practice. Many who've probably heard of Plant Moran, many who may not have heard of Plant Moran Crassa, who really, the last 25 years. We've really created a opportunity for school districts when they take out large capital programs, to really act as an extension of facilities and finance. We know your teachers, administrators are busy teaching kids. So we've been a pleasure working with other school districts within Southeast Michigan, including more consolidated schools, farming schools, Oak Park schools, Novi Community Schools, very large districts, like Detroit Public Schools, and also some very small districts like Clary School Schools. So at the end of the day, again, we've really been an extension of facilities and finance. Our fees are actually paid for out of the bond proceeds, at general fund. And if you looked at the work scope, we've done a lot of work with Clark Hill, as your legal counsel, with this, so it's their terms and conditions which we would have agreed to. There's cancellation clauses, if you don't think we're adding value, you have your discretion to give us 30-day notice. We think so strongly of our service that we offer that to you, so that we don't have questions.
Mr. Abdullah, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just in the short time that I've gotten to work with Paul and speaking to all my colleagues, all the superintendents I spoke to, I mean, phenomenal, their work speech for themselves. I really think, and I expressed this to Paul, never having worked on a bond issue before, I like to do it, and I like to do it perfectly. So us working with Dana, with Joe, with Paul, I really feel comfortable because he is there to represent our best interest. There is no questioning in, second guessing in whether, you know, what's in it for this other agency or company. He is there to represent the district, and I feel very confident working with Paul, and I highly recommend that the board do approve this resolution.
FMA is not just myself, we have a team of about 40 other individuals. So yes, I'm an architect working for an accounting firm, but at the end of the day, we have construction expertise, engineers, we also have a financial staff, project plus accountants, that will track all 1.4 million dollars. So congratulations, as soon as you sold those bonds, you have to spend 15% in the first 12 months. So we've been working with the architect to make sure that the bids are presented to the board in a very clear and concise aspect to it. Make sure pre-purchasing, roofing materials, mechanical, way in advance and when needed. You've heard a lot of the challenges with some of those material storage issues, so again, our job is to get them, make educated decisions to the boards to say, hey, here's the best thing in the interest of our bond program, and ultimately for the kids and for the district as well.
And Paul will report to the board monthly, he'll come out and give us an update on the bids, projects, where we are.
Projects, projects, actuals.
Everything, every month, we will have that, so I feel pretty confident about where we are, Plant Moran, myself.
Okay, trustee. I'm just stumbling tonight, I apologize.
It's okay, I'm stumbling too, I was just like looking at you, and I had a couple questions about this. Do I ask Mr. Abdullah Had, or?
Just ask and then we'll see.
Okay. So it says that the school district is desirous of authorizing superintendent of school district, all that, and it says on terms substantially similar to the terms and conditions contained in the draft contract. How, like what could be changed?
If there's any fine tuning that Dana needs to do with Clark Hill, then I'm authorized to do that fine tuning, again, with the advice of legal counsel. We can't just, if we present you a contract and even one word needs to be changed, well, that's not the contract that you voted on. So by authorizing me, then, similar like we did when we sold Key's Billy, if there's any kind of language or any timeline or things that need to be tweaked, then we are authorized. But I wouldn't be changing it arbitrarily on my own, working with Joe and Dana, you know, and having that, they would give me the green light, then I could sign, but I'm not going to sign anything unless legal gives me the green light. So that's why I said it's similar, but it's not exactly the same. But the cost and everything else, not going to change.
And this is going, we're using Clark Hill for this, for all of this?
Clark Hill's working on the contract.
Okay.
And Dana has 30-plus, I don't know how many years of experience.
I've worked with her 25, so it's.
Yeah, at least 25 years of experience with bonds and projects and things like that.
Okay, and then it says, the parties acknowledge that the owner has the right to modify the scope of the projects by removing projects, adding projects, or revising, modifying projects. When we promoted this to the community when we were doing Zoom, it was told to us very sternly that what we put for the bond is what must happen. So how could we be doing this?
Paul, do you want to?
Yeah, it's a great example, so for instance, you've got the roofing projects, and then you have the heights for the mechanical and plumbing. You may say, you know what, our facilities team has enough time and expertise that we'll do the roof by ourselves. We just give you that flexibility, but I think right now what we have is whatever's in that pre-qualification application for 1.4 million, that's our scope of work to get done in that timeframe. So again, that's probably the only thing I've ever seen where there might be, for other districts, it's a parking lot, or it's a signage program that may be part of the bond. Your bond is very specific, well, I've got the P cap like it's very specific, which is good, because you know exactly what the architect needs to do, what timeframe needs to be done. From a legal standpoint, they put that in there, again, if you decide to take something out, our scope gets reduced and then our fee gets reduced. But right now, I think Superintendent Abdullah, he says, our fee does not change, that was negotiated, and I think you've talked to some of your other peer districts, they have a very competitive fee range for this, but at the end of the day, just give that flexibility as a district to take things away, and ultimately potentially reduce our scope of the fee.
Okay, and one last one. For all the contractors coming in the building, I know that it's going in phases, but there might be times that work's being done while students are in the building. If that is happening, do the contractors have background checks, and how often are they done?
That's a great question, so we've actually done a lot of work with Dana and Zach Clark Hill for that specific. So right now, we have vice associates kind of identified as the architect of record for the program. We're still trying to understand what's the contracting delivery method. So again, the thought would be is bring that back to the board once you have more significant drawings and specifications ready to go. But we actually put that in the front-end specifications for contractors, that there will be background checks, and that can actually be done as frequently as monthly. Now, sometimes they include that as part of that price, but at least you get to see that pricing. There's other things such as badging, one of the things we've done with other districts. Looking at your scope, the thought would be is to go out for bid sometime this summer or the fall, procure all the materials, again, just have to meet with vice associates to see where they're at with the drawings. Then the thought would be to procure all the material through the winter time, start in the spring, so again, if it's second shift, if it's weekend shift, especially with the roofs, mechanical, plumbing, but try to keep as much distance between students, staff, and contractors, pretty successful with that.
So you're thinking that actual work wouldn't start until spring of '23?
Yeah, given the deal right now, it's 17 weeks out to get roofing material, that's from when you have approved shot drawings. We haven't been out to bid yet, so again, that's something we want to be able to work with vice associates to figure out, what does that procurement strategy look like? Right now, mechanical, electrical units are 40 weeks out, which is, you know, puts you in the spring of next year, as crazy as that sounds. So again, that's just our job to say, is there things you could purchase off, potentially consortium unit pricing for roofing, mechanical, electrical, just to secure materials. Again, we'll work with Clark Hill to get the options relative to that. So yeah, right now, we're getting roofing and MEP scope of work. If you're not going out for bids by October, November, where nothing's happening this summer, if something happened in the fall, again, we'll have to take a look at what the specified materials are. Other issues in the state of Michigan, we're a new timeframe for permits. They're about 16 weeks out right now, so again, just working with Adam and his group up there in Lansing, try to push your drawings, this will put us through once we have the architect.
Okay, we told the public that it would be about a month after the election that work would start getting done, and that, and then later it was told that it might happen in March or April or May, and now it's only come spring of '23, so I think maybe a detailed explanation might need to be sent out to everybody, because that is a topic that gets brought up often.
It's actually a point, so the due diligence actually started a month after the election. The drawings, which go through three different phases, so there's schematic design, design development, construction documents, all went out to bid. I think working with vice associates, they sent us an update, they're about 60% through, designing, going into construction documents. So it's not, nothing's been done, it's just a lot of works on the board, it's kind of marking through your buildings, testing, estimating, I know there's an estimate that is provided that we want to take a look at to make sure you're on target budgets. But yeah, visible, actual construction, like I said, we're the administration team to provide to the board, you know, here's everything that's happening today, then one of those things is going to potentially happen through now, through the fall next year.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a couple. Because the climate here makes me ask this, I, too, was concerned about giving the superintendent the power to change the contract, what are the parameters that are set? How big or little can those adjustments be made without us being in the loop?
Yeah, so a good example is the fee does not change, so it won't go up, it won't go down, unless of course you take projects away, then it obviously comes down. The duration, we think, is 18 months, so again, really through September of next fall. Again, that was preliminary, what vice has sent us, I don't see that changing. Again, we did about $120 million of construction the last few summers, so per cap, we'd be $1.5 million done in that timeframe. The other things like, for instance, insurance, you know, do you need $1 million, $2 million, or $5 million of insurance? We carry five, you're asking for two, if you need five, we give you table costs. Pretty much everything else we've already agreed to in terms of the terms and conditions.
And that would have been in this draft?
Correct, yeah.
So this is something you have worked along with the superintendent with so far?
Correct, yeah, actually, we've had two meetings so far.
Yes.
The biggest thing is really scope, so give an example, for whatever reason, if contract negotiations break down with vice associates, and you have to go procure another professional architectural firm, we'll actually do that, but the fee doesn't change, because one of the things, it's a professional service, so we go work with, get you three or four other firms. Again, we have worked with vice associates in the past, they're a good firm, they understand K-12, they understand the state of Michigan's permitting, which is good. So again, it's something, for whatever reason, was to fall apart, we'd be able to help the district do the work there. But other than that, the terms and conditions, we've all agreed to, the indemnification clauses, the switching of personnel, so you're starting to agree, you're so quickly like it, you know, so it's things like that that are not changing.
Okay, and then, Mr. Abdullah Had, who is it that you are replacing, what group? The construction group?
Not replacing anyone right now, but I've become a vice in the associates or your architect.
Right.
Performance services, we've not had much correspondence with, we've had several meetings, and I emailed Paul last night, I asked him to give me the top five CMs that, you know, and.
So he gave you the top 20?
Oh, he gave me the top 20, but some are like Barton Mallow, there's a few others, so we have options, I asked him to give me all the options, Dana also is aware of all the options. But if, if you're not coming to the table toward the meeting that was scheduled, that left a bad taste in my mouth, and I don't want, I don't know.
I'm just guessing, that's part of, A, obviously you're aware, B, that could not have helped with our timeline for, you know, right? So the unfortunate part is one of two companies brought to us maybe.
Yeah, it's interesting, because again, you've got really two key districts, so you've got the architect of record, which by state law, don't hold anything over $25,000, $419ish, has been signed by an architect engineer. Anything over $50,000, you have to have bonding, you have to have advertisements, all the seller front stuff that goes with it. So at the end of the day, the construction manager, again, if it's performance, again, they can look at the drawings and they can provide a proposal for those services. You may want to say, you know what, McCarthy's, there's like 20 other CMs I've worked with, you want to take a look at it as well. So again, that's kind of a two-step process.
And is that covered under this contract?
It is.
So what input or what knowledge would be shared with us before and after a new covenant is?
Yeah, so I think part of it would be looking at the proposed contract changes, so there's really two parts to a construction manager's pre-construction services, which would be your estimates through S, spec, design, design development, construction documentation. I think Trustee Shandless brought a great question, what's your safety rating, so what's your EMR? Typically, anything above 1 is at an level of industry standards. We see some firms as low as 0.55, which is like phenomenal safety standards, bonding capacity maybe another. So again, smaller firms have a harder time bonding $11 million programs, which ultimately costs the district money. Where there are some very large CMs, they literally can bond anything, football stadium, Missoula Arena. So again, those are things we want to bring to the board when we get to that construction piece of what makes the whole sense. So again, our job is to help educate capital projects, but ultimately, the board will make them a decision of, like, what's the best for the district. But that is included as our basic services. We negotiate with Clark Hill and Performance Ward, for potential to go get some other proposals along with Performance, so it's accurate.
Okay, I guess my concern is I would want to know how the timeline for it was exercised as to what changes were made, since ultimately we're responsible for them.
Yeah, absolutely.
There can't be anything that would come to us that would mean 24-hour turnaround, I can't imagine. So I guess I would like that stipulated in here as a matter of record, and then, I don't know if anybody else has any concerns or questions.
President Holder.
Uh, trustee Shandless, go ahead.
I have a silly question, but it says that the owner's representative shall assist and advise the school district regarding the progress of projects designed, and then it says facilitating the selection of finishes like flooring, ceilings, wall cover, etc. Do we have a committee that will meet with him that like helps pick that, or is that picked for us?
So real quick, so do you like white, tan, or black roofs? Those are three options. Some of this will be work with the facilities team, a lot of other of it's mechanic, electrical, plumbing, lighting, so again, we have worked with a building and finance committee from where they may be, I'm not sure if that exists, some structure takes place, but you know, we'll go to the superintendent to see if that's the case. Obviously, we're with the principals, and again, one of those are the user spaces that are impacted, we try to have design meetings with those users, so if it's teachers, even some students we've got along. Again, this to me is more of a maintenance, I mean, it's infrastructure, it's gross, MEP, there's not a lot of like, hey, we're doing a new media center, you know, addition, and we need to look at programming and all that stuff. But again, we'll want to take you through the decision matrices, if you will, at each step, to make sure that you feel that the user groups are informed, but at this, you know, again, a lot of it's just thing and chemical plumbing, at least the major components. As we get further into it, and again, work with vice for all those opportunities, again, we're going to have to.
I mean, if we have colors on HVAC and AC units, I'll be happy to present those.
I'm talking about flooring.
Do you want?
Yeah, for you.
100 degree AC units, I'll be happy to bring them.
Yeah, typically, we'd come up with like a materials board, so here's color scheme A, B, C, D, it all fits the budget. Usually, they're standardized colors, sometimes there's a thing for the school, so Wildcats got the white and reds versus us at the high school, which will be purple and yellow. versus, this is the high school, which will be purple and yellow, things of that nature. So again, we'll work with vice to see where those key decisions are, and then we've even seen like, yeah, four boards, kids get the vote, or if you're a Google Doc or a survey book, things of that nature.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that maybe, like, the principals, the teachers, that, you know, people who are going to be in the building, you know, two hundred plus days a year, could have a say if they have to pick floor tiling or ceilings or anything like that.
Yeah, actually, I believe Clark Hill has Article Seven, the Design Process Review, which is very much more involved in everything we have to do. It does improve finishes selections, move that committee's personnel.
Okay, thank you.
See, maybe nothing else. With that inclusion about coming to us, we have roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Shapless.
Yes.
Crystal Beaver.
Yes.
Deborah Odd.
Yes.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Barbara Holcomb.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Barbara Castle.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, and we'll be talking to them.
Thank you, thank you.
And next up, Mr. Urban has asked for us to go into closed session to review written opinion of council. So I'd like to add that as a two to our agenda. We need to get motion and support to add it to our agenda.
President Holder, I'll make the motion.
Trustee Chanlis, Trustee Thompson, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Barbara Holcomb.
Yes.
Rebecca Shapless.
Yes.
Crystal Beaver.
Yes.
Barbara Castle.
Yes.
Deborah Odd.
Yes.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So now we will vote on going into closed session to review written opinion of council. I need to make my support, please. Want to make the motion? Trustee Addt. I'll support. Trustee Castle. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Deborah Odd.
Yes.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Barbara Castle.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Barbara Holcomb.
Yes.
Rebecca Shapless.
Yes.
Crystal Beaver.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We went to closed session, some of the people. Um, I don't know, can we get the library?
We got another room. No, we're fine. Do you remember the room right next to? We just go out this way.
I have no idea.
Oh, actually, we could all vote. Okay.
Secretary.
So is after school. One is virtual one. One two three four. Is she at the home? So I think five.
Inside, okay.
I can't get it on the control. Yeah.
Uh, first. Talk a little way. Take care of yourself.
For you to make yourself.
Okay, alright. Good. Alright, well, let's go. You need a rag? Give you a rag? I got a pick up. Come on, give you a rag. Tell me where you're going.
I know, but Lincoln.
You don't tell us, right?
No, so Lincoln. Here goes.
Have a break.
Sliders are gonna hang around. The ball game.
See, now we know where we're going.
Yeah.
We come after the ball game.
Yep.
He said, "Yep."
Isn't arguing it off.
Anyhow, let's see.
See you next month.
Do you do? I'm trying to have some fun. What I always want to do is communicate. We're not trying to be, but I think, I think he's like. I was writing in the past exactly like he actually did it for the girls. He didn't answer me. Something like, okay, so becoming overrated, but you know. So you don't hold that. Certainly, too. But I look at everything there like, that's all I'm thinking of. But I'm not thinking like, you know, it's not only people in town. It's everything that's been there. Oh, I think we have a little bit. We might be, I'm sure, but. It's like, it's a little. Especially. Probably there's more than just. So I mean, we have a little bit of. Like, I mean. I'm totally, I'm very, I'm not having a bad feeling about it. You do it? I'm not the hardest one. It's that, so? But I thought the program was better. But they were, they were good. They were kind of, they were great, like, I think. They were all the other kids, just making, because I'm not my own. I should have. Mommy's like, maybe that's it. So, probably. I mean, I see what they're doing. Oh, it's awful. My mother's like, we can talk. We have about thirty eight grand dollars. That's probably going to destroy some kind of, this is what it is. Oh, no, it's a good thing. It's something that's not going to. Like that. How is that? There's a change to one six. I don't think it's going to. It's for everyone. I was actually, they, it was, she's. I was just like, if we, if I'm not allowed to do it last month, so if she doesn't like it, then it's like. I don't think so. But I mean, or not, I would like to do it. It's like. I'm like, I'm like, often, often, too. I mean, yeah, they had a big, you know. About, how, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's just. Sure, it's just. So, I'm, I'm usually from the other side. I'm good. I think. I do it, I do it. I'm, I'm good. This is the, I want to tell them. I'm not sure. I think it's. I think it's, I think it's probably. It's, it's. Really. I would say, I would say. I would say, yes. Which you can find your letter. Um, I would, she gets it really good. Well, I don't know, I think so. I mean, I think I'm changing. It's about, yeah. I'm sure. I'm, I'm. Oh, you're checking. Oh, okay. Oh, I know. Yeah, I'm ready. I think. I think. I think. I mean, I'm. I'm like. I should. I think it's just so many people. I just, I just, I'm like. Because everybody looks like, think about it, but some people come and they, everyone, of course. But me, I mean, I think, I think, oh, so. But I get what you want to do, like, how about, I don't know. How I think about it. It's not, but. I always just, I think, I think, I think. Then I, I mean, 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 I mean. So we believe, like, oh. I was in China, and I think, 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 I think. I think, I think, I think.
They are most. Are you a big basketball fan?
Is it mine?
Hey Erin. I thought that was you over there playing basketball. I was about to go over here and I wasn't there. I'm like, they're having fun. Everybody have good spring break? Knock it up still. Fall asleep.
This meeting's gonna go to like ten thirty.
Yeah. I'm about to walk out of this.
I'm here with you. Yeah, they're spreading the ball out.
Edwina, maybe we can look up some stuff. Some desks, you wanna help me find some desks? Wanna have a meeting? Don't attack me. Okay, leave the stage. You can't leave the stage. Can I come up there to you? Or no?
Yeah. You do whatever you want.
Yeah, there's no, there's no rules on that.
Well, let me go. How many are you talking to?
I think that's still on. So I can be careful.
Never mind, and I'll send you an email.
Isn't YouTube live these long?
It has to stay on.
So yes, it is. About me whenever you post session.
No, because if you stop the stream.
You can mute it though. You can mute the stream.
I'm sorry. I just think that.
That was in the question. Look at that. And, uh. Is that? She's like.
Sixty-seven cents or something like that. That can't be right. It was like, it was even a lot of time. Spit out. Like one of the. Four people were saying. Actually came to the. The owner said, I don't want to pay for it. I'm learning about it. But that machine, whatever it costs. It cost her a bottle. So they were like seventy cents. A dollar fifty might be costly. But that was, they got a machine directly. Perhaps because it's operated by like a banking company or something. I feel the money. No, it didn't get it. Totally wasn't my job.
Everybody back? What time is it? Eight forty-seven. We are back in. Next up, approval of budget amendment. Attached is a copy of resolutions for the general food service, capital projects, debt and service activity fund. And for our first budget amendment for the board of education's review and approval. A budget presentation was provided at the last board of education meeting. It is recommended the board of education approve the first budget amendment for general food service, capital projects, debt and student activity funds. Any maker in support, please? Trustee Holcomb. I support trustee Bat. Any discussion? Very non-rote called Lo, please.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Deborah Allen.
Yes.
Barbara Castle.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Rebecca Shandless.
Yes.
Crystal Beeler.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And next up. Motion to only use Clark Hill for board district contract and legal issues. It is recommended the board of education approve the motion to only use Clark Hill for board district contract and legal issues. Any maker in support, please? Trustee Thompson.
I'll support.
Trustee Shandless. Discussion.
Is over.
Trustee Shandless.
Um, so it says that we'll only use Clark Hill for board district contracts and legal issues. Would that be anything that will end up coming to the board for a vote?
Right.
So it'd be, um, like contracts and everything. So what would we still use Trun for? Would we have any purpose to have them at all?
Trun has two purposes right now. We have a student account lawsuit. They're representing us. And the bond. Is that correct, Dr. Hill?
Yes. I'm counsel.
So those are the two issues that they would be, um, you would be using their expertise for. And to keep solidarity and financial responsibility. Everything else would go the other way.
So after those two things are kind of finished?
Everything else, yeah. Anything that's gonna come to us.
Alright, thank you.
There is, yeah, definitely a flow of information. Anybody else?
President, how long is Trun in part of this?
Well, Trun has, um, the option for many of such as so as Clark Hill. But we can't keep going, remember, um, Mr. Holcomb, last year, we kept going back and forth. And we would get one answer from there and then we were getting more, um, service requests to, to get clarification from someone who had worked on it. And this is going to keep it all uniform for us. So we're not paying two legal services to give the same information. This was, has already been agreed upon by us. But it needs to be clarified, this being the third time this has come to us. To pass to us, the board. Anybody else?
I have no, we have a question, Madam President.
Yes.
So Mr. Abdulha, if he has a legal question. This would restrict him as to, would we call?
Yes.
In the past, Mr. Abdulha, have you been able to use other law firms? Was Trun the only one? Was there not? I wasn't here last year. That was.
At one point, we had four.
Mr. Abdulha, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry. I asked him directly. Sorry. Go ahead with that.
So we had four at one point. You had Paul Rogers, you had Luskin Albertson, you had Trun, and you had Clarkhill.
When did we go down from? I know this year when Paul Rogers left, but then?
Luskin Albertson got absorbed, then bought out by another company. And we never replaced them.
Okay.
So that left us with Trun and Clarkhill then.
Okay. And Trun still will be used for specific things. We're not saying, we're not using them. They have responsibilities to be discussed. But it has not been uncommon for this district, only in the very recent past, that we haven't had one general counsel and then specialty counsel. So Trun will be our specialty counsel. But Clarkhill will be our general counsel.
Can I ask Mr. Abdulha a question?
Sure.
Mr. Abdulha, obviously, that was not understood. Is that why you went to Trun on this particular?
No, it was not understood. I mean, say you's true. But if, if that's the will of the board, then that's the will of the board.
Does that make your job more difficult?
I don't know. I mean, the only thing I'm looking at is what if Joe goes on vacation? You know, or?
Except Clarkhill.
Right. My, everyone has a specialty. For example, Jonathan Martone handles certain lawsuits for us, and he's won some lawsuits for us. I, every lawyer within the firm handles specific things. So like, I've been working with Dana. Dana is specific to facility, so.
So that's been part of the plan? They're already in the form of this. They all went under Clarkhill. Anybody else? No roll call vote, please?
Barbara Castle?
No.
Deborah Odd?
No.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
No.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, motion to have two meetings per month. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the motion to hold two board meetings per month. Need a maker in support?
President Holder, I'll make the motion.
Trustee Chambliss? Trustee Holcomb? Any questions?
I have a question. If?
Trustee Beaver.
Um, if we vote this through tonight, and say three or four months down the road, we notice that it's not working out, how would that work at that point? Would we just make a motion to go back to just one meeting?
This isn't a bylaw. Um, so if we wanted to make it a bylaw, we'd have to do two, two meetings in a row and pass it. So I think this is more, let's see how it works. And if it does work, then we can always make it a bylaw. This was from our special meeting discussion. Anybody else?
No.
President? Trustee Castle, go ahead.
My only concern is that we'll end up with two meetings as jam-packed as this one. And, um, if we would have two meetings split, and I know we talked about this in our training, it would be good if we had one meeting to work on things that we have. Like our, our policies and our, so that meeting would always just be for those kinds of things. Policies, bylaws. Because we're not getting that kind of work done. We're just not getting it done. So if we would do that for a short time, then maybe we would get caught up. We wouldn't need two meetings. I need to see the strain on the central office people to put out these kinds of packets twice a month. It's a while. So I'd be willing to vote yes if we would do it on, like you said, maybe do it for a while, see if we help folks. And try to keep one meeting solely to get things done. Not business, but when I say not business, you know what I mean. Not the day-to-day business, but trying to take care of the policies, procedures, goals of the superintendent, those kinds of things that I'm kind of getting pushed over here.
Got it.
So I'm in favor of trying it for a while.
Anybody else?
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss, go ahead.
I just want to say, I'm in favor of doing two a month. I definitely agree that we should try it. If it becomes too much on the central office, we can, you know, see about accommodating things. Or if it doesn't work for us, we can see about changing it. Um, but I'm hopeful because we have been advised to do two meeting a month, two meetings a month since last year. Um, I think Brad Green has even said it. Um, it's been brought to us that we should do this. And hopefully, by doing this, we can finally get to reviewing policies and updating policies. We have policies from 2004. I mean, there's probably older ones too, but that's the one I can remember. So we need to, um, work on getting those policies done, customize them to Niola, um, and looking at, um, all the other different things that have just become so outdated that we haven't had time for. So I'm really hopeful that by having two meetings, we'll get the district like up to shape and like customize and revend.
Anybody else? And, and now the agenda does say one's motion meeting and the other one for information. So we are going to try to get the information out in the second meeting of the month in preparation for the first meeting of the following month. So that's the hope. Let's see what happens. So no other discussions? Roll call, vote, please.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Barbara Castle?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Board of Education approval is needed to purchase using Title I funding, eight-smart seventy-five-inch interactive display with Android interactive display, including one-year smart learning suite license with warranty at, at a R E M C price of $3,189 each, or a total of $25,512 for Madison Elementary School use. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the technology purchases listed within this action sheet for Madison Elementary in the amount of $25,512. I need a maker in support.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Beaver?
I'll support.
Trustee Chambliss? Any discussion?
I have a question.
Trustee Beaver, go ahead.
Um, I know we had already purchased some smart boards. Will the purchase of these eight, um, displays be enough to cover all the classrooms of the elementary school?
No. No. These are not enough to cover all the classrooms. We have a separate, using S for money to cover the difference. This is using Title I. This, this purchase is using Title I.
I mean, with the ones that we've already purchased, plus this one, is that enough? You're saying it's not enough? They don't still have four anymore?
Not to switch them, not to switch them all to the interactive. If you remember at MES, when they got them, those are outdated, where the projector is there, and the light bulbs, like three or $400 for a light bulb, and it doesn't last long. Now we're moving to a self-twenty-year-life-expectancy smart board. So eventually, we'll present you more, more, uh, purchases.
Oh, this was, I'm sorry to cut you off. Is this the first, um, purchase of the interactive ones, then?
For MES.
Yes.
Trustee Thompson, go ahead.
I'm just curious, what we're doing with all the old ones? Is there somewhere we could donate?
I think the board policy states that we have to, um, present the, this. The, when we have to discard of technology and stuff, there's a certain process we have to follow. So I'm just waiting on Oakland schools to give us advice on, is it worth it to resell and let another district, who maybe don't have as much resources, buy the light bulbs? Uh, but you have to discard technology a certain way. You can't just throw away.
Someone else have a question?
I was just wondering, I'm sorry.
Trustee Chambliss?
Um, so the ones, because we just bought some last year, so those ones are obsolete. We're gonna replace those ones, too?
At MES?
Yeah, didn't we just buy a couple of smart boards last year?
We bought some smart boards for ECC. We replenished all the smart boards at Wilkinson three years ago. Uh, we bought some at the high school. So I don't think MES has any. This is the first for MES.
Okay.
But ECC, almost every classroom has one. Wilkinson, every classroom has one. High School has started, not yet. But this is the first round of replacing smart boards at MES.
So the ones that are at ECC, Wilkinson, all that?
Brand new twenty years.
Oh, okay. So those ones were the new ones?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought you were saying these ones were the brand new, first time?
Yes, for MES.
Okay, I got you now. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Anyone else? You're in, no. Roll call vote, please.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Barbara Castle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Board of Education approval is needed to purchase one hundred twenty-five Chromebooks at $299 each to obtain one-on-one student use. Five charging carts at $2,800 each, plus warranty, a total of $51,375 for Madison Elementary School. Use to be paid for using Title I funding. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the technology purchases listed within this action sheet for Madison Elementary in the amount of $51,375. I need a maker in support, please. Miss, Trustee Holcomb? Trustee Thompson supports. Any discussion?
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss?
Um, so we're being asked to buy another one hundred and twenty-five. But every time we're asked to buy Chromebooks, I ask, how many do we have? How many do we need? Will this, you know, complete what we need? So is this going to be where all of our students are one-on-one?
We, I, so I got that email. I asked Stephen Melcher, because I recall you at making that request. He gave me the breakdown. We are about eleven hundred Chromebooks. But now what we're starting to do is replace the teach, um, the computer room that's outdated. We're gonna make that and create some testing, um, for, for M-Step. So these are, these are not to be, I don't think these are the ones that are going for students, correct? These are the ones are utilizing for?
They're gonna be a combination. So we have ones that we just got that were allocated for, I guess, the testing area. So those ones can take over for the students.
For the students?
Yeah.
So we're gonna have a testing area now? The, the garage area, you're replacing the computers, right? So the computers, right now, they're running and computing, correct? If I'm wrong?
Yeah.
And computing is basically running one computer and attaching it, and it's really slowing up. Now it's more stations. And again, they're using Title I money that they could decide on how, every building could decide how this, how to spend their own Title I money.
So we have about eleven hundred right now?
Um, let me just, I'll give you exact numbers.
So will this be the last month we buy right now? Or are we gonna? Like now that we're getting towards the end, I make sure everybody has one or is looking back around to start with the first computers again?
I mean, the first batch that we started with 2019 already kind of hit. I mean, that's how quick technology gets updated. But I, I, I do recall him, Stephen Melcher, who's our new Wes Prescott, if you remember Wes Prescott, Stephen Melcher. Um, I recall him giving me a number, and it was approximately eleven hundred so far. Because I, I had him do an all Chromebook count, excluding the ones that we got gifted from Troy. Some of them are missing some keyboards and stuff like that. I mean, they've labeled every single one, and they've categorized it and scanned it. That's what they did during the break. So every single one now scanned and in a badge, and they could absolutely control every single Chromebook.
Do you plan to make it a one-to-one thing? Where all students have one to?
We, we should be at one-on-one now. I mean, if you're sitting at nine hundred and some odd students, and you have eleven hundred Chromebooks, and, let me just, let me just find the email, and I can just give you the number.
Can I ask a question? Are you open it up or?
Trustee Beaver, go ahead.
Um, I know at one point we were renting. I don't know if we still are or leasing, um, iPads at the elementary school. Have we, are we done with those? Are they turned back in? Are we still leasing?
No, we all know. At the end of the lease, they're ours now. Yeah. And I have the, um, Chromebook count. So the iPads are all owned by us, including the ones that we lease. Here's the count that he gave me. MES is at two hundred and forty-five Chromebooks. Wilkinson's at three hundred and ten Chromebooks. MHS is at six hundred and twenty Chromebooks. Total, one thousand one hundred and seventy-five Chromebooks. So that is more, that should be more than one-on-one. I mean, Wilkinson's at a hundred and seventy-nine kids. He's saying three hundred and ten Chromebooks. That should be more than one-on-one. High, high school's at six twenty. The lab at Wilkinson does not have Chromebooks. They're using the old desktops. These are the numbers that I got. So I could ask them specifically, where are they all? Because they wouldn't scan them all. But that's the number that I got, dated March twenty-fourth, from Stephen Melcher.
It would just be nice for the, especially the students like in the high school that are taking ed menton courses. If they don't have a good laptop at home, doing homework or studying can be very difficult. Um, and I let my daughter use my laptop so that she can do it. But i-if they don't have one, you know, it just would be nice because the school was giving one. And we had talked about doing that, um, so that each student had one and no other districts do it. So it would be nice if we could utilize, you know, almost twelve hundred laptops and nine hundred kids. Yeah, so.
MHS is at six twenty. So let me, let me get you a report on how they got them assigned, and, and how are they utilizing them? And I'll get you a breakdown of how they're using them.
Good. Any other questions? See none? Roll call vote, please.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Barbara Castle?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, approval of food service kitchen upgrades. Board of Education approval is needed to purchase the itemized upgrades to Wilkinson, Madison High, and the early childhood kitchens using food service funds. An itemized list has been attached for your review and approval. The attached upgrades are needed to improve the quality of the listed areas. The total amount of the upgrades, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars. These items will be obtained using a pre-approved vendor where goodiness required. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the food service upgrades contained within this action request in the amount of one hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred sixty-two for the buildings listed. I need a maker in support, please.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Beaver? Trustee Beaver? Trustee Thompson? Any discussion? Um, I have a couple of questions or notes. All of these say that they're not going to take effect until after June thirtieth of this year. So, just so everyone's aware of this, though we're purchasing them or trying to now, these are things that'll be happening in the summer. Um, and, there's one other thing, the, uh, seventeen thousand dollars that was improving food quality? Does anybody have a next, but just what a definition for what that's going to cover? I'm sorry, uh, the last line item, improving food quality? I think it's seventeen thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars. So it's actually not, it doesn't sound like equipment. I just wondered what it was.
Actually, um, it's, uh, being able to, um, offer better foods, better products to the students, a better menu, a upgraded menu to the students.
Okay, so it's actually gonna be a food purchase, not a machine?
That's correct. Food purchases.
Got it.
Yeah, um, it's supposed to improve the food quality, so, um, buy, um, a more updated arrangement of food?
Yeah, no, no problem. Just, that doesn't sound like equipment. Thank you, President. I have a question. Trustee Thompson, go ahead. Are we changing food services?
No, we're not changing food services. We're just gonna change some of the offering, you know, by a, um, better standard, or, um, change the menu to offer more quality things to the students, offer more quality food. And this is just one of the categories that, um, the Michigan Department of Ed, the Food Service Department, you know, offered that we can do.
Any other questions? See none, roll call vote, please.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Barbara Castle?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Shapless?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, approval of individual employee contract, Sarah Provenzola West, Human Resources Director of Public Relations Media Director, effective July one, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the individual employee contract as presented. I need a maker in support, please. Mr. Holcomb? Trustee Holcomb. Trustee Odd? Any discussion?
Madam President, can I make a request?
Trustee Thompson, go ahead.
Would this be appropriate, gender request that we table this? Because there were a couple of things, and I might have gone through the contract, but there were a couple of things where I just wanted a word here or there change.
Um, if you get support, leave a note on it.
I'll support.
Trustee Beaver? Okay, so the motion is to table. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Trustee Castle, go ahead.
Mr. Julhan, didn't you send us an email telling us that the contract was, there wasn't that much of a change? The wording and everything was the same as the other contract?
Can, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
For clarity, because there was two motions. There was a motion is, uh, by Trustee Holcomb and supported by Deborah Odd.
Right, but then the secondary motion becomes the primary motion, and that is to table. So we are now discussing only the table.
I'm just trying to hear if there's a need to table.
I'm just saying that the motion on the table right now is to table. And Trustee Beaver, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask if Mr. Erber, can we just make sure that you're doing it correctly? On the secondary motion?
I don't have your most parliamentary procedure in front of me. Generally, a motion to table is gonna, um, is gonna take precedence, but only if the motion to table is heard first. So I don't know where and which version of Roberts you're using that says the motion to table takes precedence over the, um,
Our, our second motion is the one that takes precedence.
I, I haven't seen that, and if you're telling me that that's what your Roberts rules of order say, I've never seen they have Roberts rules, so I, I don't know. I can't give you an opinion. That's not a legal opinion, that's opinion on your parliamentary procedure. I'll be having to bring Roberts rules next time you tell me which, which Roberts you're using.
Trustee Chambles, go ahead.
If the second motion can't take precedence, could the first motion be rescinded by the makers?
Um, the, the-
I know we've done it like that in the past.
If, well, if you've done it like, again, I don't have your version of Roberts rules with me. I, I have not, I've been furnished with a copy of whatever version of Roberts rules you guys use. So I'll have to take your word for it if that's what you've done in the past. I mean, the easiest thing soon would be, um, to vote it down.
I think the concern is, the request to table is because we don't want to vote it down because we're still learning it or researching it. And I don't think everybody's comfortable voting it up, and that would be not fair to Ms. Provenzola and the district to vote on something that, obviously, a couple of board members are not ready to vote yet. And by forcing them to, it could have negative consequence, so it's almost like, if we don't table it, that's not fair to anybody.
I completely understand what you're saying, but I, I can't offer an opinion when I don't know what version Roberts you use, nor have I been furnished with your version of Roberts. I can't offer an opinion on which Roberts you're using for that.
Mr. Holcomb, would you like to rescind your motion? Mrs. Odd, would you like to rescind your support?
No.
Then, um, I, I disagree.
I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not taking a position. I'm saying I haven't seen your version, so I, I don't-
Yeah, it's always been the second motion to the preference. We had to move on the second motion to go back to the first motion.
If you wanna give me some time to look it up, I'd have to look it up.
I want to do that.
I just have to fight on my laptop and, and connect your internet.
Sure.
Joe, do you want to use mine? I'm ready to talk. Yeah, that'd be great.
These contracts were made up. Um, did Legal help you make up these contracts, Mr. Julhan?
Yes, yeah.
So if there's a question regarding your contract, and Legal and Mr. Julhan answer your questions. Should say, I may or may not, if I get around to it. This is how I read it. I'm, I'm likely to have clearly say, yes, I will evaluate once a year. It was just small things that I-
Okay, under Roberts rule of order, earlier devised, subsidiary motion to lay on the table is properly used only when it is necessary to suspend consideration on the main motion in order to deal with another matter that has come up unexpectedly and which must be dealt with or the main motion can be heard. So. So is the issue that's come up an unexpected issue? Now to me. Is it unexpected to the board of this question?
I don't feel like I had enough time. I didn't receive it until Thursday evening. I had no power until Friday evening. You know, and I have a life term on a weekend.
It says in the book, it is preferable to avoid moving to table a motion or then the motion to table. A main motion that is laid on the table can be taken up again by adoption or a motion to take from the table. A motion to be taken from the table in the same session or the next session, depending on the matters that are reported. So it is a subsidiary motion, it's not a motion that takes precedence? So your motion to table will take precedence over your initial motion if something unexpected has come up?
Would trustees not having power be an unexpected event?
That's to the board to determine whether or not the, whether or not it would be that it's unexpected.
Well, I guess we'll vote on the table and see what happens and go from there. Okay, so, any other discussion on the table?
Yes, Madam President.
Trustee Odd, go ahead.
Thank you. Did, did Mr. Erber just say that the table does not take precedence over the first motion?
If something unexpected has come up, then the motion to table will take precedence. Sole purpose of taking up mortgage business that requires attention or something unexpected has come up. So you can vote to table?
So, any other questions? All righty, with that, um, roll call vote, please. The Thompson and Beaver.
And this is to rescind.
To table.
To table.
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Shapless?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
No.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Barbara Castle?
No.
Deborah Odd?
No.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes to table.
Next up, approval of Robert Whitman separation agreement. Oh. Okay. Next up, employee separation agreement, Robert Whitman, principal, Wil- Wilkinson Middle School, effective March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the employee separation agreement for Robert Whitman as presented. Any maker in support?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'll, I'll support. I'll make a motion. Can we go back for one second? The table that last five, I can't date my column table.
We will address it in our next, right, our next regularly.
Thank you. And I will make that motion for you regarding gotten to next day.
Okay, and we need support, approval of the Robert Whitman separation agreement.
I'll support.
Chambles. And any discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Shapless? Yes. Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
No.
Barbara Castle?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Human Resources Personnel Report. Uh, trustee. New hires, Deanna Hall, bus a, Michelle Curtis, bus driver. Kelsey Di Toledo, cafe, cafe worker. Oh my, Robert Whitman, Wood, Wilkinson principal. Nothing else. It is recommended the Board of Education accept the Personnel Report for Madison District Public Schools as presented. Need a maker in support, please?
I'll make the motion. I'll support her.
Trustee Beaver and Trustee Chambles? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Shapless?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb? Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Barbara Castle?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, Facility Set Set List Update, added, see what we include?
Next one.
Okay, so number four. Moving on, check register approval. The expenditures for the month of March twenty twenty-two. Details are attached for review. Complete the payable, I apologize, six hundred twelve thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars sixty-five cents. Payroll, four hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars forty-nine cents. Wire transfers, five hundred seventeen thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars seventy-one cents. Total of one million five hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the monthly expenditures totaling one million five hundred forty-five thousand one hundred fifty dollars and one cent. I, I'm going to ask for a maker in support.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Beaver, support?
I'll support.
Trustee Chambles? And then I'm gonna ask a question. Dr. Hill, why don't the two numbers match? Normally, they do. Yeah, so is it the one million five forty-seven eight thirty-five eighty-five or the one million five forty-five one fifty oh one? One, okay. Yeah, it should be the one million five forty-seven eight thirty-five eighty-five. Okay, so I'm going to just, to clarify, re-read the motion. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the monthly expenditures totaling one million five hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. And, uh, Trustee Beaver, do you still make that motion?
Yes.
Trustee Chambles, do you still support?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
Madam President.
Trustee Thompson?
I am curious why Ace Transportation is all over the place. This bus is twenty-three thousand dollars. My goodness, we could have bought a bus for that.
Does it change from month to month, how many special ed kids we have?
I don't think it's, it doesn't change, but maybe the amount of times that a special ed student is transported. And then when our special ed calls, seven percent is for the year.
Have we ever checked into maybe share wiring with another bus in a close other district for special ed? I just feel like we've spent enough money and takes that we could have had our own bus, our own truck.
Yeah. In terms of sharelining and special ed students, you know, depends on what's in your mind. And making something special. Maybe for a special transfer. And then, you know, tiny has to be considered. And then I do want to remember that seventy percent is going to go to the district. And so, you know, our cost is about thirty percent of that. That was all, just curious.
Uh, trustee Chambles, can you?
Thank you. Um, I was just wondering, why are, is it normal that we're, we're getting invoiced in November or December and we're just paying it now in, like, we're probably in March? Like, is that normal? To have invoices four or five months old? Okay, so, there's a lot of, um, like, did, did we just, I guess? I don't know how to word it, I'm sorry. Um, so it's not normal to see those, but is there a reason why there are so many of them?
You know what, I could look into it, but, um, normally, we pay them as we get them, unless something was delayed for some reason. But, and you're talking specifically about the transportation invoice, or?
Oh, no, there's A and G Central, Ace Transportation, American Solutions. AT&T is from February. Aunt Millie's Bakery.
Okay, this check register is for March expenses. Yeah, so if it...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so this check register is gonna cover March expenses. We're just coming into April today, so this is for March. And, um, I would expect, you know, if it's March, you would see some February invoices, that's, yeah.
Right, and the February aren't that big of a deal, but what about the November, November 3rd?
Yeah, it shouldn't be any from November 3rd, so I can look into those specifically and see what was the cause.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Madam President.
Trustee Thompson? There's a lot on here for December also.
I'll look into it and see what happened.
Also, for example, if you're using A and G Music Central. So the process for that is the band teacher might send in a repair, a work order. And then sometimes, depending on the timeline of when they invoice us, we might have three or four or five weeks' worth of repairs. Then they send us the invoice, then we have to give that invoice to, back to the band teacher to double-check that the, the, the bills that they're charging us for are for repairs that are done. So it might be two months gap in there. Now, regarding, uh, food, we did get notification and we were behind on Aunt Millie's, I believe your address. We did talk about that, um, with, with food service already, 'cause we, we also noticed it. Some things are operationally just, I would say forty-five to sixty days. Sixty days is pushing it. Forty-five days would be normal by the time you get the invoices. But things in November, if you're seeing stuff in November, then that is way later than November. Unless it's like A and G or something where we're sending in instruments for repairs, from the time that they invoice that, they service that equipment, it might be in November. But then forty-five days, by the time they send it back to Jeff, and by the time Jeff verifies that it was... So depending on what invoice it, let me hear.
That makes sense, thank you.
Any else? I do know I was contacted by an email from Ellen Group. I don't think it was late, I just talked to her to submit it to where they did the first bill. I don't have any part in that process. Uh, any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Barbara Castle?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Crystal Bieber?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, Buster Grant update. You mean, May?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up. Up circle, ahead.
Um, before we continue, can I make the motion to table number seven? Just the temperament and length of this meeting, I think it would be better to hold on to that for a future meeting, Coach.
You can actually maybe just add that as number one of, um, our study session meeting in two weeks. Is everybody okay with that?
Madam President? I, I, I just wanna go on the record, this is the second time, so I just wanna make sure that the notes read that this is the second time that the board has voted to table the superintendent's goals. So I just wanna make sure that it's not because I'm requesting them, but it's the board is requesting them.
I mean, if you do it tonight, I'm trying to, I just wanted to tell me I had it as a better total.
I'll support it when everyone's fresh, I just don't want it, I don't want the notes to look like I'm withdrawing it. So I'm just, I'll be happy to add it at the, um, next board meeting. And I also need some clarity on when you wanna start. I wanna go back to the motions on two meetings. When do you wanna start those? I just need clarity on when you...
Seven o'clock, the second, or the third Monday of every month, is that all right with everybody? So two weeks after.
So do you, do you wanna start that in May? Like, give me a month of when you wanna start.
I'd start, no, this month.
Do you wanna, so the third week in April?
Yes, please.
So the, so going forward, the third week of every month would be an informational meeting, and then after that would be the, okay.
Yes, and, and I concur. I just tend to, to desk or to take note.
Yeah, um, there just needs to be a second before discussion, could have happened on that, but, the table.
Okay, I thought I read, actually, that we could just withdraw it as we all agree.
Oh, okay.
So, I think we're good. Next up, Board Idols Committee Reports, GRC.
Oh, that's me, I'm sorry. We have a meeting on Wednesday, so I don't have anything to report today.
Next up, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee Report.
Nothing to report today, thank you.
Next up, Parks and Recreation. Next up, Board, oh! The trustee Holcomb, we forgot about our pal and, uh, update. We were, you are right.
Okay, I don't have anything from, right now, I don't have anything. I'll reach out to Lauren, I don't have anything other than, they started soccer, I did ask her on, on that, that they're practicing in Pontiac on, on soccer, but I don't have anything other than, than that. But I do have the other, um, I did pass along the other information that you were talking about, um, regarding, um, the skills trades and things like that.
And Mary, can we just add Palace number four to our committee report? Can we make it easy on us? Thank you. Next up, Board Comments, we'll start to deal, we usually do. Trustee Chambles, go ahead.
Um, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out. I wanna thank Mr. Whitman for all he did for Wilkinson and to staff and students who, um, loved him and rallied and everything. You guys are amazing and you should be so proud of yourselves because you came to school today. You kinda got a surprise that he wasn't here and you still kept going. You picked yourselves up and you kept going, and you should be proud of yourselves. Congrats to the Students of the Month, keep up the great job. Um, and as we head to the final stretch of the school year, we have a lot of big events coming up. We have, you know, the kindergartners getting ready to go to the MEAs, we have fifth grade, eighth grade, and twelfth grade graduation. And it's, it's a beautiful time of year because it's when all the students who have spent upwards of thirteen, fourteen years in, you know, school are about to take the next step in their journey. And so, as these events are coming up in April and May, I just wanna say, you guys have done an amazing job and I think of you often and I look forward to seeing all of you on graduation day. So please enjoy every minute and every moment, and that's it.
Next up, trustee Bieber.
I had three pages of notes to say tonight and some great quotes, but I'm gonna walk until the next meeting to say those.
Trustee Holcomb?
Congratulations to the Students of the Month. Part of the meeting. Again, maybe, I think it was fourth and fifth, my president, you know, the... Yeah, I think it was fourth and fifth, I thought Senator Daniel before, you were about, about fifty-six, but maybe it was... We have the operator, operators in here, open houses and all. Get some students to go to the buses, take them down, with the hands-on, go through the screen and whatnot, all kinds of instructions. Refund for all.
Trustee Castle? I just would like to thank everybody for, um, that come in there with us through the meeting and I want to congratulate our Students of the Month. And I do love that part of the meeting, I wanna see it continue. And that's all tonight. Trustee Thompson? I'm gonna do everything, Madison. Trustee, uh?
Everything was touched on already by the number trustees.
And with that, I am just going to say goodnight. So, we need a motion to adjourn. Need a maker in support? Mr. Holcomb wants to do that. And support trustee Bieber. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Crystal Bieber?
Yes.
Barbara Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Barbara Castle?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes to adjourn at nine forty-three PM.
Who supported the motion to adjourn? Chris?
Oh, yeah!
Why is this discussion? Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna kinda be loose the first time and figure it out as we go.